Okay.
Mano.
Darwishia.
Marina.
Grace.
Thanks.
Kim. I'm Asher, I'm with the leader eighty-eight fifty-nine.
She likes to talk.
Okay, what I'd like to do is... What I'd like to do is read this proclamation and then get these guys up here and come around and have a picture taken together. If you don't have any objections today?
I don't.
Okay. Whereas Thursday, March twelfth, two thousand fifteen, March one hundred and third anniversary of Girl Scouts of the United States of America founded by Juliette Gordon Loh in nineteen twelve in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas throughout our history, Girl Scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of character, conduct, and patriotism. And whereas through Girl Scouting, girls gain courage, confidence, and character to make their communities and the world a better place. And whereas, Girl Scouting takes an active role in increasing girls' awareness of the opportunities available to them today in math, science, health and fitness, technology, and community service that expands their horizons. And whereas, more than three point two million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating one hundred and three years of this American tradition with nearly fifty million women who were former Girl Scouts and living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. Now, therefore, I, Robert Elbuck, a virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Marion, Illinois, hereby applaud the commitment Girl Scouting has made to America's girls and proudly proclaim the week of March eighth to fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, as Girl Scout Week in Marion. That's pretty good. I wish I'd written that. It's pretty good. Now, having said that, why don't you guys go around and...
And I've got two boxes of cookies, our new Rawa Raisins, which are new this year, and we've got the new gluten-free, coffee-tastic cookies. You guys can try both of the new kinds of cookies.
Well, thank you very much. These guys are always in for trying stuff. Me, I'm a traditionalist. I like peanut butter cookies.
The chocolate covered or the sandwich?
Oh, the sandwich. Don't mess up. Peanut butter is good by itself. Chocolate is good by itself. Mix them together and screw them both.
Tell me something.
Or did I have those? Okay, why don't we go out and visit Dawson?
He's behind me.
Oh, there he is.
We go on to Mr. Dawson.
You're just in time for the pictures.
Oh, wonderful.
Do you want to meet the guys?
Yeah. This is Jay Ricks. He's the police fire commissioner. Next to him is Attorney Vanilla. Now, he is the finance man.
He's the money guy.
Or want to be close to him. And this guy, he's the cemetery. He's the cemetery commissioner.
So we want to stay away from him.
Stay away from him.
I've got to get home early here.
So let's go around and join the girls.
Let's turn around so we can stay here and move on this side of the pole so we stay out of the pole. Move over this way, girls. Somebody's forty-one to the front. Okay, please, every time. You've got Mayor Kim front.
But I want to look at him about treating him like him.
Hey, hey, come on up.
There you go. There you go. All right. There's room for both of us. I want to stand on this side, okay. Get you in the middle, yeah. There we go.
Is everybody smiling?
Oh, yeah.
Everybody's smiling. Better hurry, girls. My teeth are getting dry.
I shouldn't say hurry anymore. That would be...
That was pretty slow.
Hey, how are you all? It's all right? How many for Girl Scout time?
Okay.
You all good?
We're good.
We're good.
We'll be congratulating you.
And hopefully they do a good job and good things for the city.
They've got a good job. We're going to do a good job.
We need a frame. We should put this in the window with the rest of the stuff. Here. Mr. Vanilla.
Here.
Mr. Dawson.
Here.
Mayor Butler.
Here. Any addition or correction to the minutes of the meeting, regular meeting, February twenty-third? If not, they will be approved. A special meeting on March the second of this year. Uh, we've got two minutes there. Any additional correction to the minutes? If not, they will be approved. And at this time, I believe we have a visiting partner from John A. Logan College who would like to make a presentation to the council. I believe Stacy Shaker is her name.
Thank you very much for having me. I am Stacy Shaker.
Come on, I dare you to stand back from back.
All right.
These guys won't buy it, maybe.
Sure.
Yeah, the official podium.
Yeah. Okay. Is that better?
Perfect. Perfect.
All right. Very good.
Ready.
I am Stacy Shaker. I'm the executive director of the John A. Logan College Foundation, and I appreciate you very much having me here tonight. And I'm going to go ahead and pass these out to you all, so you have them. This is just some information about the foundation. And basically, what we do at the foundation is, and I have a few extra if anybody would like one. Um, what we do at the foundation is we provide scholarships for students that attend the eleven high schools in our district. And we award about eight hundred thousand dollars in scholarships every year, which is eight hundred thousand dollars each year.
The foundation?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah.
Could we borrow some money?
What's amazing is, as big of a number as that is, we have about thirty-two percent of our students who need financial aid. And even after that's over with, they're still needing some kind of assistance. So even though we're able to help over six hundred students a year, there's still just a tremendous number of students that we can't help. And so we're working hard to make sure that we establish new scholarships so we can help more and more students. And so the reason that I'm here is just to kind of help spread awareness about the foundation and what it is that we do. On a side note, if you know anyone who is going to be attending John A. Logan College, the deadline for scholarship applications is coming up. It's March fifteenth. So let them know they need to get those scholarship applications in. But last year alone, four hundred and fifty students attending John A. Logan College were from Marion High School. And so we have a large number of students from Marion High School who attend. And, you know, I just wanted to talk to you briefly and just plant the seed if there's ever an opportunity for the city of Marion to maybe provide a scholarship or any kind of assistance to a Marion High School student or more than one Marion High School student. We would certainly, you know, welcome that, and I'd love to answer any questions that you or anyone else might have. But that's basically in a nutshell what we do and how we try to make a difference.
What's the limit to the money?
We have people who say, "We want to provide a scholarship and we're going to send you a check each year for five hundred dollars." And we have those that say, "We're going to send you a thousand on a..." In order to establish an endowment, which is twenty-five thousand dollar minimum to do an endowed scholarship. So that's a whole different animal.
I didn't ask you about that.
Yeah, so we do have, I mean, we have people that say, you know, we send them a reminder each year and they send us the funding for a scholarship. What's fun about it, I think personally, is for the people that are establishing the scholarship, we let them select the criteria. So, you know, if we have people that maybe want to, they want to send a scholarship to a student at Marion High School, and maybe they're a retired teacher, so they want it to go to someone who is going into education. And they can really set the criteria to be as specific or as general as they want it to be.
Do your average high school students ever get scholarships?
Um, you know, we do have students that, I know what you mean, that aren't necessarily the top of their class that get scholarships. We actually have some people just in the last couple of years that I've met with that have said, "I want this to go to the kid that is not the bright shining star necessarily, but just wants to go to college and wants to get a degree." And so we do have a couple of scholarships that are really geared at a GPA that's not the highest. But those are definitely not common.
Let's see, what's your rating scale? Do you have, what, up to four or do you have five?
It's up to four.
Up to four. Seems to me that, oh, what does the criteria for enrolling at John A.? What, do you have to have a certain grade point average or do you just walk in and say, "I'm here"?
No, you can just walk in and say, "I'm here and I want to sign up for classes." And so now, for some of our scholarships, not all of them, but for some of them, you have to be a full-time student, so you have to take, you know, twelve hours. So you can't just take a class and get a, you know, a twenty-five thousand dollar scholarship. Yeah, there's no, like, you don't have to tab S A P scores or basic P scores of a certain caliber or anything like that.
Do you have someone to make the selection on the, those that are based on need rather than GPA?
Yes.
Who makes that selection?
Um, we do, what can go happen two ways. We can have the high school select the recipients. If you were to choose, you know, we want it to go to a Marion High School graduate. We do have the ability to have the high school say, "This is the person." And then there are other people that say, "We want your scholarship committee at the college to select the person." So we can handle it either way, but we do have need-based scholarships as well. You know, you can say, "I want it to go to a first-generation college student," or "I want it to go to..." I mean, you can make the criteria whatever you want it to be.
You know, that's fine, but I kind of assumed Mayor Butler was going to, sometimes those get biased and the, and the high GPA person gets all the scholarships. I mean, if you follow the scholarships that are given out at Marion, you may have one or two people that get the buck of the scholarships. I don't know, but just, I'm kind of like him. I'd like to give it to somebody that, you know, is maybe not one of those high GPAs, but a good performer that, that would do well with the money. Another question, Al, are those four hundred and some odd students, are those in the associate program or at all programs?
I believe that's in, of course, all courses of study, all categories. So they could be in cosmetology or construction management. And, you know, that's another thing, I know you didn't ask about this, but one of the things that I'm really working on is, we have some, we have some programs of study that just don't have a lot of scholarships established for that particular field. Cosmetology, dental hygiene, construction management. There are a few that just aren't the popular ones that people come and say, "I want to provide a scholarship for a cosmetologist." We don't have that very often, unfortunately.
Dental hygiene takes twenty-five plus dollars an hour, too.
Yeah, dental hygiene, and the thing about the dental hygiene program is, once they get in and pay for tuition and all of that, they have like a thousand-dollar kit to enter that dental hygiene program. And it's heartbreaking at the beginning of the semester because these kids come in and they're like, "I'm in the program and I've got my books and I've paid for this, but if I don't have a thousand dollars to buy this kit, I'm out of luck." And, you know, so we're working to address some of those specific needs.
You seem to have a very successful version program. Are you sure that those students are taken care of by various, you know, hospitals and stuff like that? So that, there's probably not really, there...
Well, there's, you know, there's always need, but yes, we do have, we do have S I U scholarships, and we have scholarships from Hartley Elementary and several of his community members who are in the healthcare field that have established scholarships.
Two committees we were talking about, limited to, excuse me, the high school or the college to determine needs, or can that be established some other way? Something like Kathy said they could get past.
Yes, I know what you mean. I have not, I don't know of any scholarship that we award that uses a method to determine the recipient other than just being a high school. That doesn't mean that, I have to check into that to see. We have to, in order to protect our five-on-one C-three status, we have to make sure that if someone were to give me a check and said, "I want to establish an endowment and I want the scholarship this year to go to so-and-so," I can't provide a tax letter for that because they've said basically who they, you know, who they wanted to go to, the tax remain. So I would have to check into that to see.
But for those upper echelon students that have high GPAs, you know, a lot of the colleges reward with scholarships. You know, John A. does, you know, you see it every all the time. John A.'s awarded scholarships.
Our famous recipients, right?
For recipients of that nature, that's, you know...
I mean, certainly if you were interested in making sure those, the scholarship went to a student like you're talking about, you would make your, lower the GPA and you would have to set the criteria up so that we were targeting that, that student.
I'd say, don't award it to anybody that's got more than a two-point-five grade point average. That ought to hit the average, too. And who knows, that average student might be president someday. Okay. I think we appreciate your presentation and we will give it some serious thought.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
But we'll not want to get into the twenty-five thousand dollar in doubt.
Hey, I wouldn't have done a very good job if I didn't throw that out there. Every once in a while, somebody bites. You just never know.
You cast pearls before the swine.
This is election area, you know.
Look, you know, there's nothing wrong. The truth never hurts. Okay. Having said that, do we have anybody else that has something to, before we get into the record of course presentation?
Well, yes, I had a question. Want to make a presentation to you guys right here?
It's Bill Settle, ten thousand.
I think we've seen you before, haven't we?
Yes, you have.
Several times.
Yes, I'm here in behalf of Son Loa Banks, A U on Marion. Here to really recognize you guys for all the dedication and support you gave us over the years to help our children and our community. Because we find it very important that we all work together in our community for our children because they're our future and for the reason that they're precious. And we need to keep our minds focused on what's so precious to me. So at this time, I want to give you guys a clap for the city for showing your support. I wish you guys could just come up and shake your ass.
Let's get a picture.
Yeah, that's what I love.
We got to turn, we got to turn, guys.
We're good. Get in here with us to make a left picture of us.
Get the good part, yeah. This is behalf of Son Loa Banks.
Turn sideways, but look that way.
We want to thank you guys so much for what you have done over the years and for the community as well.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Sure. Huge thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
This is the best man's humanitarian award. We give out ten dollars a year.
Thank you.
Anybody else have something?
Yep.
We do. Mr. Mayor, we are Big Muddy Media. We had an opportunity to do some video for, for the city. Those videos are finished and show, so we'd like to debut those for you here today. We've got Jennifer Settle, who's going to be on this wall right here. We'll just take this in a second, and then I'll answer any questions, and we'll answer any questions that you might have.
It was an educational experience, going out for about twenty-five days in the community, meeting people that we hadn't met, going to businesses we hadn't been inside of. Just lived in Carterville, but learned a lot about Marion during this process.
One of the greatest things about Marion is that the climate here from the city government is extremely positive. So if you're looking at relocating your business or growing your business here in Marion, the city's going to be your friend. They're going to try to find every opportunity to offer incentives.
It seems like some communities, they try to put in regulations and try to figure out how to hold you back, and Marion is the complete opposite. They've done nothing but been supportive of us. We give them a lot of credit for our success.
I can walk over to the mayor's office any day of the week, knock on the door, jam, and say, "Mayor Butler, do you have a moment?" He'll say, "Sure, Mr. Brown, come on in."
Any successful business takes hard work, and so we were ready for that. What we were surprised to find, though, was the support from the community. It was, not that we were surprised by it, but it was just overwhelming. It was greater than we ever thought it would be. And as a result of that support, we were able to become the number one Harley-Davidson dealership in the world.
You take the airport, the interstate highways, and all the assets come together, and then you add to that the manufacturing, the job that they, like ourselves and ISN. And the reason that ISN's here, the reason that Pepsi has prospered, is because of a great caliber of employee and the support of the communities.
The investment that Marion's made in infrastructure, sewer water, and of course broadband infrastructure is fantastic in this region, so we can grow any kind of business that we want. Information, age businesses, all the way, healthcare is reliant on that as well, so lots of opportunity, lots of people working together across multitudes of sectors.
Medical community is growing, and professional community is growing, and, I mean, you know, why wouldn't you want to be part of this? It's, it's moving down, man.
I'm too bent, but I want to go to Marion.
We're just getting started. That was economic development. Here is emergency services. This is actually the first one that we did.
I've been doing this twenty-one years now, and I still love, and I still love coming to work because, I mean, I think you do have to have a passion for the job. It's something I've always wanted to do, and I enjoy dealing with the people. I enjoy helping people. Since I first began with the department, we now have more officers, we have better facilities, we have more training available to the officers, and we have more technology available to help us do our jobs. I think you have to be a people person to do this job, and I think that you have to be patient. To me, you can't be a bully-type person to do this job and to do it well. I work for the people of Marion, and my job, I feel, is to keep the people safe and secure. We need the public talking to us and telling us where the crime is in town or identifying suspects for us.
It's just the public service that you do, being able to get out and help people, you know, especially the jobs that we do. You know, it just helps public relations between us and the people. They know who we are, we know who they are. We're there to help them, and that's what we want to portray, that we're there to help them. You know, obviously, training is the key to success, you know. If you stay trained and up on, especially the new equipment that we have. We recently just purchased some new cutters for extrication tools. We bought one of the blow-up boats, like a Zodiac boat, to use for ice training and water rescue. Our response time here in the city of Marion is normally between three and four minutes, and that's from the time that we get toned out. You know, people make a call into nine-one-one, it goes to our police dispatch, and then our police dispatch gets the information and tones us out through, you know, through tones that come through the department. You know, you got to have that relationship between the police and fire department. They're a very good asset for us. You're all doing the same thing. You're all working for the community, and, you know, that's one thing. We serve the community, we work for them. So each one of the departments has to understand that that's who our boss is. We work for the community, and that's what we're there for.
Okay, next up, we have, uh, quality of life.
The quality of life in Marion, I feel, is probably one of the best that you would find in a small town. It's a great place to raise a family. We have an excellent school system. We have wonderful access to medical care here. And we have a beautiful area, if you enjoy the outdoors. We have so many different places that are just a great place for you to go and enjoy doing things with your family.
I just like the people here. The people here in Marion are great. I just like going to work alongside these people and going to church alongside these people, and I look forward to raising my own family here in Marion. Marion Unit Two is comprised of four thousand students. Because we're a large school district, Marion Unit Two is able to stay out front on a lot of the initiatives in education in general. We have seven schools, five elementary schools and a middle school and a high school. Having those five different elementary schools allows us to keep class size down, allows us to have that small school feel, but still have the resources that larger school districts have.
We have a state-of-the-art medical facility that's only eleven years old, and they offer every service that you can imagine. They have wonderful connections with the bigger facilities if they need to be used. We have physicians throughout the area. We have a lot of different specialties, so most of your healthcare that you need, you can receive right here in Marion, and it is quality healthcare.
Here, there's that, that sense of community and family, which, you know, I love, and I met my wife here and things like that, and we don't, we love this area. And I don't, I don't want to go to a bigger city. It's neat.
So from quality of life, we go to recreation and entertainment.
I think there's all sorts of things to do here. With the ballpark out there, that's, that's fantastic. I mean, that's like going, you know, to another town when you're sitting in that ballpark out there.
It's really a year-round facility, and you know what? We're always trying new things, you know. This year, we may do something that we didn't do last year.
And Marion is just growing leaps and bounds. You could go over to, say, Miss Emily's, you know, have a sort of a nice pre-show, dinner, cocktails, go over there, watch a play or a movie or a musical, and go over to Martini Joe's afterwards and have a couple of cocktails over there, and then come over here to see a live band later on in the night. Really different experiences at each place, all available within a very short walking distance.
If you need to host an event in Marion, we have a wonderful facility, the Pavilion of the City of Marion. Anything you need to host a small intimate event or a large corporate event or trade show. And we're really excited about that. It's the new recreation center.
From its workout facilities with state-of-the-art machines, to the track, to the basketball court, to the pools, I think there's something there for everyone.
The Marion Cultural and Civic Center brings a lot of different entertainment to our area. Singers, songwriters, acts, performances, plays. Honestly, anything you could expect out of a big city, our civic center has gone above and beyond to bring those here for us.
Every weekend, there's always something going on in Marion, more than every weekend, sometimes every day. We've had, you know, from Kid Rock to Vince Neil to Bret Michaels, Easton Corbin, we've had a lot of them come through here, and they all love Marion, Illinois, and all of them want to come back and do shows here.
What are you waiting for? Let me see what Marion has to offer.
And shopping and dining.
I think people come to Marion to shop because we have a few shops that are a little bit different than they may have in their area.
And I think with us having those small boutiques and the small, unique shopping experiences, that brings more people to Marion.
We do have larger department stores such as Dillard's. We have the Target. We have a lot of little shops in our downtown area, local businesses with local people from here in Marion. We promote each other, with anything that we can promote each other with.
Marion, Illinois happens to be the hub of the universe, but we're also the hub of the restaurant industry. There's about seventy-something facilities here in town where you can get something to eat. There's a wide variety. where you can get something to eat. There's a wide variety. I am always partial to the mom-and-pop places, and we go from there to Old Charlie's or Applebee's or wherever you like. You can get it here in Maine.
We also have a lot of restaurants that provide the dining experience. We have Walt's Pizza, which has been a mainstay in the community for many years, as well as Benny's Italian Restaurant, which is in downtown Marion, Asian restaurants like Asian Bistro. We also have Thai food with Thay Dee. So you can really get anything that you want. Dining in Marion is excellent.
And finally, can't do a series of videos in Marion without talking about the mayor.
I was first elected in nineteen sixty-three. I am now in my thirteenth consecutive term as the mayor of the city of Marion. I sometimes refer to it as Butler's Odyssey, because of the great experience, the exciting things that have happened. The city was practically bankrupt. We couldn't pay a dollar and twenty-five cents for a bundle of wood stakes on credit. Now, our credit is double A-plus. I, I don't want to know why, up here, why something can't be done. If it's something that's good, all I want to do is to hear how to get it done. When you're doing something good and you're doing it right, it, it almost is bound to continue. It's a well-rounded community. In fact, I sometimes think that we're almost heaven on earth. I really haven't given any thought to legacy. If I have a legacy, I think it would simply be, I, I did my best.
So there you have the six videos that we talked about producing and, and obviously did. So Devin Miller, I'm Todd Ellis, and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I think you're very well done.
Thank you.
Everything except the next segment. I don't know if that would be necessary.
Yeah, that was, I'd like to change to, put in a little league ball system, make him out of, or soccer field, right there, but that, with the track.
I think you guys.
I think you did real good. I think you caught the essence of it.
Well, thank you. And, and to answer your question, to address your concern, these six were a bedrock. We plan on doing more. It was actually written in that we, that we are available to you to do more. And so, once we get these done, move on into the spring, when some things are happening, be a great time to, to continue the process.
Where do we go from there? You've made them. Now, how do you get it out there so people see more here? That, that was.
This is pretty much it. No, I'm just, Terrence is gonna put them on the website. They're gonna live on the, on the city of Marion's website. They're gonna be used in social media. Terrence will probably answer a lot more of that.
You guys talk about Intune, too?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And there'll be tags, you know, Marion, Illinois, restaurants for each individual thing, so when he types in something on Google.
One of my biggest concerns here was, we don't market Marion enough. Now, we've, you know, we've taken that step, and, and we're gonna have to build on that. I, I don't like seeing our other communities, you know, being the forefront where this is actually the place to be. We have every type of climate, infrastructure. I mean, this, this council's been hounded in this election for spending money. We've spent that money wisely. And we, you know, I don't care what anybody says, our debt is good debt. We can pay our debt, and we've invested that in Marion for Marion to be the place to be for, you know, the next fifty years.
You have the advantage that, as far as we know, you're the only community in Southern Illinois, this far south, that has this type of bidding, individual.
Uh, in, in fact, I, I used the economic development in, in the rural development conference that I was at this past week. I used the economic development piece as the introduction to our, why Marion has been successful in TIF. And, because you, as you know, three of the speakers actually were TIF projects. So, and it had a very nice results. I mean, the, the Alderman from the Chicago area came up and said, "Can we come and visit Marion? Because you guys must be doing something right."
Well, and then you.
They were right.
They were. I invited them to come.
You turn around and then you look at this. You know, what you give us today? You know, when I read that, you talk about swelling of pride, and what this means to us.
Our double A-rate.
As a city, as a council, you know.
Yeah, he's, he's got the standard poor rating record for the ten-million-dollar bond issue that we had in November. And of course, they gave the city a very, very strong commendation. They, they talked about the city's strong management, finance affairs, which runs contrary to some area newspapers, editorial staff. But we will have copies of this made, so it can be read. But it, it really goes in-depth, the profile of the city of Marion, and I, I know it makes all of us proud. Of course, standard poor, big, national organization. They went through everything that was available and bid some, and they gave what I think is a glowing, glowing report. So that, in addition to what you fellows have done, ought to put us in the front row.
Well, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to do it, and along with everything else that Terrence and Gail and Hillary are doing in your marketing plan, we feel like that these videos and, and the other videos continuing on will be at least a part of that, that marketing plan to help move Marion forward and, and let people know about all the great things that you've done here. And again, we, we appreciate you giving us the opportunity to do it.
Now, are you, are you awaiting us to give you further direction, or you've got more in the process?
As of now, this particular project is, is.
I know what you're doing. Are you ready to go on another one?
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll coordinate with Terrence. What, you know, what time, what are you doing after this?
Of course, he's buying.
We'll, we'll coordinate with Terrence and, and you guys, and we'll figure out what the next step might be.
That's not enough. We need to have something to do.
I understand that completely. We're, we're here for you. We appreciate it.
Very good. We thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have something?
Uh, no, he's not. And actually, um.
Well, we had the bids for Nemoish Brick Building in the one on the left, Madison, on the brush burner for some time. And I know there was some concern about there being a common wall between that and the front.
And FEMA and attorney, our city attorney, Green, were supposed to work on that. Steve Green's currently out of the office this week, and Jim was not, had the lead worked earlier today. So I, I would.
We need to move on this. That fellow come in, his father owns the property right adjacent to the one B, demolish, and, and stuff keeps falling off, and, and banging up his property. And the owner is another fellow, probably about as old as y'all's. And he, he really is getting disturbed by what's going on. So we need to get after this.
It's been, not the end.
At, at least. You know, we, we ought to be able to easily determine if there is a common wall, and if we can demolish this building and leave that wall standing. So we've got to move on this.
I'll, I'll have Jim speak for you on it tomorrow.
Okay.
There's, it's, it's a lot of things to look at. As many walls as I have in the city, the years I did. I think it's got a common wall. I think that, because we are sort of, it's an arched wall, it's.
And if we can demolish the building and leave that wall standing, well, okay. But if not, then we got a problem. Then we got a problem.
Say, I owned that building one time, and it was a party law. They told me to not own it.
Well, I think maybe the next thing we need to think about doing is, what do we do next?
Yeah.
And I think that was one of the complications.
We don't want to wind up buying the other building. We don't want to dominate. That's what happened, I think, Johnson City. We tore down one building and bought the one next to it. We do not want to get in that situation.
He lives in that building, too.
Okay. This is all business. So what, what's going on about the telecommunication rights-of-way access agreement with Ex-Tenet system? Do you have anything going on there?
Well, Brian has submitted some revised, he's working with them on the draft of their plan.
Yeah, we reviewed their drawing, which is, you know, thick, kind of like when Clearwave came to town, kind of Oliver, Oliver Town, which they are all east of the interstate, more or less. So we reviewed that and sent them a three-page letter back with corrections to the superintendent's on where they put the fiber, where it wanted to move, and that kind of thing. So we now expect them to recent drawings.
You haven't gotten a response yet?
No, we just now sent it to them. So they'll, they'll revise the drawings, but their response, I don't expect to be that big of a deal, or just review it, or just permit it.
And, and would that apply to the dark fiber license agreement also?
Well, we're just reviewing as far as installation or construction. Then you've got Seagreen's, or Rightaway Green's, I'm not.
Yes, the, uh, Rightaway Agreement and the Dark Fiber Agreement, there were a couple of corrections that needed to be negotiated. So if we could table that again.
Great change for HUG accounting employee.
I, I'd like to discuss that in executive session.
Okay.
Getting back to, to number three, three or four, two or three. Initially, wasn't they going to go overhead and then they?
Initially, we had very little underground, which tickled me. And then, my understanding is they're gonna use power pole from Amaran. Well, I don't think they quite like pricing from Amaran, going over here. So now, we actually have quite a bit of underground. There's still some overhead.
You mean they can go underground cheaper, then they can use Amaran's pole?
I guess. I don't know the contents of that conversation. I assume Amaran will charge and use the poles. That's what my understanding.
Yes, that was, part of it was the, they could not get an agreement for all the poles that they needed from Amaran, so now they'll have to have underground. That's why the plans had to change somewhat, because we have a lot of utilities in the ground, and for another utility in the ground, or more fiber, it was going to.
Yeah, you, you look at Main Street, you know. I, I don't know how we could afford or to take any chance of putting a number utility underground there.
We're, we're trying to get a water line from Harbin up to Third Street.
Yeah.
And it, it is just, it's never impossible.
Yeah.
Verizon's got that big three-foot, three-foot conduit through there. There's underground electric. It's, it's, it's.
That's, and that's trying to cut across the road to go to the other side, right? Yeah, I mean, this.
It's getting packed. I know that our, I don't know about this stuff we saw, too, but at least that Clearwave and probably this newer agreement did have in there, that we need the space for the future. They do have to move. But Clearwave accepted it. I'm assuming Ex-Tenet will have to accept that, too.
We, uh, with Clearwave, I mean, I, I'm taking, this could be a competitor to them? Would they want to do it for them?
Terrence, think about that, Mike, you know?
I don't think so. I don't think they'll be a competitor. They're basically for the, the wireless cellphone users like Verizon and AT&amp;T. Telestine will be using it.
What about the, the next rate change for accounting employees?
Yeah.
Applies what we want to go into. Okay, Clearwave, all right. Okay. The hiring committee on that one, for replacement patrolman, one has been selected by the hiring committee, but he still has to go through background check, lie detector, and physical, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I just, let's hold off on that till we're comfortable with that. Okay. Include that. All right. What's the situation with respect to electronic recycling? Who's got that?
Anything.
Let's move. Terrence and I have been working on this for well over a year now. We thought we was gonna be able to partner with the county, and that fell through. Terrence has come up with another firm here, and it looks like on March twenty-eighth, between nine and twelve, I think we're gonna have it at the training center, people can bring their electronics as specified here, and they don't take them all. And you can discard them at no cost. It's gonna cost us six hundred and fifty dollars, but then we hope, when they sell this, that, you know, we'll recoup our losses back, maybe make a little bit of money. But this is something that, you know, that sort of we needed, and so they don't want.
Well, they did TV sets.
Yes, they'll take, they'll take flat-screen TVs, I think.
They'll take flat screens. Some of your bigger, older models, like your projection ones and stuff like that. I don't, I don't think they want. Console TVs and projection TVs, no. So I bet that's. Problem's only been half solved. Yeah, but I mean, you know, you, there's a lot of other, me and you, things.
It's got to go forward, too.
You may be right. I've been wanting to get a flat screen, but, uh, Louetta keeps, Louetta keeps vetoing. She says, "What's wrong with this?" And I said, "Well, it's fuzzy, and it jumps back and forth." She said, "I can see it all right."
Did I sell that to you?
Yeah. I think that's perfect. It's been out of business thirty years. But anyway, I think this is, uh, this is gonna be good for Marion, and for, give people the opportunity to, to get rid of those electronic devices that they, you can't take to a landfill or, or any other type of exchange. I watched a woman close to my age put one in a dumpster at Aldis Market last summer. Went down the walk across the glass and threw her TV in their dumpster. So anyway, we're gonna, we're gonna give you an opportunity on March twenty-eighth, from nine AM to twelve noon, to, to do this. And I think it's, you know, we'll. Sounds good. Hopefully, this can be successful. We'll parallel all that success to having others in the future. Okay. Next, approved part-time hires for HUG. What have you got on that?
Um, these are three people that have been approved, and Commissioner Patton has gone through their information also with them. And so two would be just for part-time, less than twenty hours per week, probably about nineteen hours per week. One for food and beverage, and one for fitness. And then the last person, Kate Robinson, she's currently a staff member in the membership area, but she also, they would like to have her improved as a fitness instructor at fifteen dollars per hour, when she's teaching classes. She teaches, what, an hour of class?
What does she do otherwise?
She works in membership at nine fifty.
These, these, uh.
It's, it's still part-time.
Because she only works with you, then?
Yes, she's front desk staff.
She'll only be paid fifty. If she works two hours, she has one appointment. She does her work my appointment, does she not?
Uh, she teaches a class.
Teaches a class.
It's, they're scheduled class.
She doesn't have a class, she doesn't get paid.
No, they're, but they're, yeah, she has, so, is she doing that?
Did I say it right?
HubFit. HubFit, she teaches HubFit.
How many hours will she work, Hillary? Do you think?
Her schedule, she's one or two, maybe, currently. One or two hours maybe a week for HubFit. I mean, it's scheduled different times per day.
She has classes scheduled. I didn't know how many classes she had scheduled.
Right, we have multiple instructors that teach the classes, so she doesn't teach all of it. Uh, two or, it depends on how many students there are, because it, but only when she's teaching that, would she get that weight.
Okay, if Doug were here, would he move his approval of this? You think so? I'll like that. I'll like that one square. I'll second. Call her up.
Mr. Witts.
Yay.
Mr. Vanilla.
Yay.
Mr. Gos.
You know.
Mayor Feller.
Yes. Okay. Now, I understand that Latina Foo, the director of the Senior Citizens Now, I understand that Latina who, the, uh, director of the senior citizens, uh, center where we now are, uh, wants to, uh, state her appreciation to the street and cemetery departments. For the good job keeping the parking lot and walkways free of snow and ice during both of the recent snow and ice events. Uh, I think that was, uh, very, uh, very nice of the Latina to make that recognition. And then indirectly, of course, the street commissioner should receive some credit for directing his people to do a good job.
The truth hurts, doesn't it?
Yeah, it hurts.
You know, we, we've had two significant snowbaths in Marion here in the past couple of weeks and, and to see our streets in the condition they are by, you know, the next day, I mean, just cleared and passable is, you know, uh, they're. You know, just a tribute to those guys and, and, and the knowledge that they have in, in, in that area. And it's, you know, it's, a lot of it's street, but we have cemetery and water and sewer kick in there too, doing some of the, the, uh, parking lots, city parking lots and things like that. Tower Square that, you know, takes away from those guys, the hub, and, uh, to see those, uh, guys work together. Doug did, uh, Phillips did a great job in his first, uh, I guess, get him wet, yeah, and, you know, getting his, you know, his, his feet wet and, uh, with a significant storm like that. Because, you know, when it started at eleven o'clock that morning, I mean, it was, it was all go to, you know, late in the night, they, they just did a tremendous job.
Yeah, those, those guys performed really above and beyond call of duty, they, as far as I know, uh, they, they didn't complain, they just got in and put their shoulder to the wheel and did a tremendous service for everybody in town. And, and I'm sure that there's some area communities wish that they had the capacity or capability.
Well, I mean, I, I was sharing with you guys that, uh, you know, we, we got fifteen snowplows for Marion with our, what have we got, streetwise, how many square miles or how many?
About fifty miles, semi, our streets now, at least.
At least that much.
At least fifty, some of them.
You can imagine what a Memphis would have, and they would have fourteen snowplows a month, so.
Now, there's where some of the money's been spent, for whoever cares, it's what's spent, we're well-equipped, street department financed it, south half of the state, and it's not by accident. Bradley built it, they knew what he's doing, so, you should be proud of it.
Are, are you telling us we only have fifty miles of streets?
And now it's.
I said, my least that means.
Yeah.
Well, she lives, twenty years ago, we had a hundred miles, are we shrinking?
That was to send us back there.
I can't remember the exact amount.
It's, it's fifty plus.
Seen many of them in that.
May, may, maybe we need to send somebody out with an odometer or something, meters.
I don't typically do that anymore.
Yeah, they do, yeah. I did that for ISO ratings and for some, I thought it was two hundred or something.
Uh, John Bradley had it one time, told me two hundred and ten.
Yeah.
So.
The, the, the streets that we fly, those, I think, I think, for the streets we fly.
I can't believe we got two hundred miles, although, what wouldn't you consider?
Now, I mean, I'm, I'm.
That was streets, that was streets and alleys.
The state highways and the federal highways.
Well, they are.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure they are.
We're not counting those.
That, that goes.
Anything inside the city limits of Marion, I'm sure they are.
Technically, those aren't city streets.
No, they are.
But, you know, in, in, in addition to what John says, you know, when we buy a new truck for, for either the cemetery or the sewer or the water, it gets a four-wheel drive dump and it comes, and we buy it with a plow kit too. So, I mean, uh, it's, it's been pretty well thought out, you know, we can, how we can make other, our other departments useful in this process.
When I became, first became mayor, we didn't have this removal equipment, we had one motor grader and, uh.
We barely had a fire truck.
Well, they forgot to feed the horses one day and so they were almost out of business, but, uh, we, we had a big snow, Ralph Cash was the street superintendent. He got on a motor grader and it did not have a cabin on it, and I thought he was going to freeze himself to death. But, uh, he, he made it end, uh, and the, uh, snow on the streets, but that, that's how bad things were. A little later, we were able to buy one snowplow. And today we've got, well, I thought we had ten, but you say we have fifteen.
We have fifteen plows, yeah.
Fifteen plows. See, and we only got ten men, so why we need fifteen plows?
That's gonna get the cemetery people to help out, the local people to help out.
They go on their lawn boards with the cemetery.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we kinda scheduled Brian, he, uh, took you by the, uh, uh, training center on your way home the other day, he said you made a remark. Who, who's all equipment is that? He said, uh, that, that'd be ours, mayor.
Yeah, listen, when, when you get all of those trucks together in one spot, uh, it is awesome. I mean, it was really impressive, and the thing about it, the trucks are big trucks, have powerful stuff, and, and to see them all on the lot down at the training center was really impressive. I don't know how many of them will run, but they'll all park there anyhow.
Would.
They all run.
One was told, we, we forgot to pay a little kudos to Brian Fisher and Gail, they put together feeding this crew every night, uh, down there in the middle of the night, early in the morning, freshen food and, uh, it's a big service they perform, uh, uh, we appreciate that, Gail and Brian.
And those, and those guys really appreciate the, uh, the consideration that the city gives them and, and feed them and, uh, you know, our heavy workers did a great job, worked out very well.
Okay.
All right, now, uh, what's this, uh, agreement, Clearwave, to increase bandwidth at the library, where are we all at?
Uh, I'm gonna defer to Terrence, it was.
Over at the library, are you guys here?
Whoa, don't you wanna put the camera on you?
Over at the library.
Yeah, they're helping now.
They've been running out of, uh, internet speed, so, that's been the, the major problem that we had over there, and they've got a lot of traffic and everybody else that comes in, uh, so their, uh, the internet, uh, has been maxed out on. So, they need some more internet, so we got a proposal from Clearwave to increase their internet from, from ten to fifty, uh, which is a.
Wait a minute, ten to what?
To fifty.
Fifty?
Yes.
Why such a jump?
Well, because that's the, that's the standard jumps nowadays, that's what you gotta have.
So, if you are fifty, if you got to do something, you wanna jump to a hundred?
Yeah, I have to see that happen eventually, within at least two years. You know, and the reason being is because of speed with everyone having, most people nowadays have at least two or three, um, internet devices on their persons at, at one time. So, there's a lot of internet that they're using and they're needing, so, uh, it's, it's become a, a, a major commodity at the library, and they've been running out of that, so they need to get some more over there. And so, this here proposal is to, uh, give them, uh, more internet speed. Uh, right now, the rate is at, uh, five hundred a month, but with this E-rate and everything else that he'll have, it will drop that price down to about a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars a month.
Did you do that negotiating?
So, that's what they need.
Okay, so you're, you're.
Stating anything.
You're suggesting then that we approve the agreement, is that right?
That is correct.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. Uh, I'll call the roll on that motion.
Mr. Ricks.
I'll say yay on that motion.
Mr. Vanilla.
Yay.
Mr. Goss.
Yay.
Mayor Butler.
Yay. Okay, thank you, thank you, Terrence, all right, anything else, Jim, you got something you want?
Yeah, I'd like to express concerns, I, uh, you know, for the last seven years, I've been having problems with employees that work at the appliance whistler.
Next, next door.
Next door to where we live, they trash, uh, the church parking lot over there and they trash our yard all the time. And apparently, they, uh, made back, uh, from what I understand, Lou Ann Sims was saying, that, uh, Pat Adams was made sick of them when they were over there in, uh, near Marion Street. They did the same thing while they were over there, and when they created that Tiff district over there, they've moved them in over there, trashing the neighborhood and my house and my mother's house, and my mother's eighty-four years old and, you know, she doesn't need that. So, I keep having problems with, I've had the police, I've even had Mr. Icar who's here, over there, when I had one of the employees chase me around the block in a truck. You know, but now I'm having problems with this guy named Derek Oliver, and, uh, every time we leave the house, it's just tormenting. We leave the house and he knows we're not there, cause he lives a few houses away. He'll, uh, trash our yard, right now, they've put rocks all in our yard.
Uh, you reported this to the police?
I reported it to the police commissioner, and I reported to the police and I've, I've had him out there twenty times on things that were going on. I've got just a picture after picture after picture to prove that things are happening.
Well, yeah, yeah, and, and do you have pictures showing these people doing this?
No, that's the problem, but let me explain that, when, uh, when, uh, um, when this happened before, there was a guy that, uh, was running over glass in the backyard and I caught him doing it. And I said, I saw you do it, he said, prove it, that's the way they've been doing it, like, prove it, okay? And I said, well, his name is Mr. Faulkner, I said, well, Mr. Faulkner, he said, well, how do you know my name? I said, well, I remember you testified against your father, and he got all mad about that, but anyway. Anyway, uh, so after that, a few days later, I thought, well, I'll just try to be nice with him and say, how are you doing today and all that, and the guy wasn't friendly, so, uh, he said, can I cuss here or not? Cause I can tell you exactly what he said, he said, F you, your mother and F you, you F, F, effin' Jew, is what he said to me. So, I've talked to Marion Police Department to try to get this straightened out, or I wanted to follow hate crime, you know, but nothing's being done. Now, I talked to the commissioner here, Jay Ricks, and he said he had talked to Tom Dini about it, about what was going on the other day, to, to tell this guy, this Derek Oliver, the seriousness of this thing. But it's not any, done any good, they pushed, when they had the snowplows come in, they pushed all that rock over in our property. So, the next time they, it snowed, I said, did you do this, to the guy that was driving truck, he said, yeah, I said, well, could you move some of that back? And he's moved some of it back, but now they're just throwing rocks all over my yard, cause I reported to the police commissioner.
Or, you've seen him do this?
I, I've seen him trash my yard, I've seen Derek Oliver trash my yard, and I've also saw that Faulkner guy run over that glass, you know, and also saw him take some star foam and, and they'll strategically put it over in their property, so it'll blow over in our property. But I mean, you can go over there now, I, I welcome all to come over to my house, that's just down the road, my mother's home, my eighty-four-year-old mother's home, it's just down the road over here on, uh, North Van Buren. And all you have to give, do is go down the, um, Market Street, North Market, you'll be right there, and you'll see where all this trash is in our yard, strategically placed, and rocks thrown up in our yard. They just, I mean, and it's down there, we can't even leave the house without it happening, so I mean, it's a torment, and no, and nobody's doing nothing about it. Now, Mr. Icar went over and talked to him about it, he said there were several people over there that day, you know, of course, they denied that they were, but I've got a picture of him in the truck, you know, right here on me. If you wanted to see where he walked around or following stalking me around the block a couple of times.
We installed a camera there. Our detectives installed a camera, we didn't detect anything, and he tells me that the detective told them when the camera was there, so therefore it wasn't any good.
I recommend, I've talked.
Well, I was just, uh, can I recheck something there, since you brought that up? Now, they did, they, I said they did put cameras there, they did put cameras up there. But, either Tom Dini or, uh, TJ Warren, which is, which is hard for me to believe, but somebody told, uh, Carl Orlovich, the owner of the place, cause he told me, he said, you had cameras, the police had cameras up there.
There's the appliance store?
Yeah, he owns the appliance store, he said.
This isn't the other neighbor, so you, you got two people, one on the, uh, the north side and then the appliance store on the south side, is that right?
Right, but the neighbor works there. He, Carl Orlovich owns the home that the neighbor works at, which is on the other side of us, so, you know, they play these little games when I'm not at home. But anyway, the police department, you know, told, apparently, it was either Tom Dini or it was TJ Warren, like I said, it's hard for me to believe that, but somebody told Carl Orlovich, cause he told me, he says, the police department had cameras up all over there and they didn't find anything.
That doesn't mean the police told them.
Huh?
That doesn't mean the police told them about the camera.
Well, who told them?
I don't know.
Well, who could tell?
Tell me, listen to me just a minute.
Okay.
The remedy for that is for you to get a private person to set up those cameras, and that's, that's no big deal, Terrence could tell you, well, no, we don't wanna be involved there, but we might have. They did not tell them the cameras are.
Well, who said, only the police and I knew about it?
We can't answer all those questions, we can't answer.
He said the Marion Police Department had cameras up and they didn't find anything, how would they know?
I'm telling you how it's all, I'm telling you how it's all, that's what it's not.
No, but I mean, I'm just saying, if that's true, that's corrupt police government, if that's true, if it's not true, then it's not true, but if it is true, it's corrupt police government.
Well, if you're making a quantum leap though, when you say that.
Well, I mean, if she's paying favoritism over those people.
Well, now, wait a minute, now, you're making some assumptions here that you're not justifying.
Well, I got some pictures.
Well, yeah, but you got pictures of what has happened, but you're trying to say that the police have been telling these people when they set up a camera. You are making a quantum leap, you're speculating, and you shouldn't be making such statements.
Why don't those bother me?
Well, well, yeah, but that, you, you cannot, unless you know, for sure, you shouldn't be making such statements. Now, uh, everybody is accepting, uh, your statement as, as true when you say somebody is trashing your yard, okay? But, you have not seen these people do that.
I have seen them do it.
Oh, you have?
I have seen them do it, and I have seen them do it all the time, now, since I started seeing them doing it, I reported that they were doing it, now, since when I leave the house, they do it, so I can't see them do it.
Do, do they have dumpsters?
Yeah, they've got big dumpsters.
And, and obviously, is this coming out of dumpsters?
It has in the past.
See that?
But it, but, but it's, a lot of it's in the front yard, the dumpster's in the backyard, you know, but it has in the past, yes, because they don't, they don't empty their dumpsters.
But I don't lay.
I could show you one of those if you wanted to see.
Well, okay, now, here, here's what we gotta do, gonna have to get you together with, uh, Chief, uh, Tom Dini and set up a plan. I mean, I, I've been hearing thi- this complaint for, I don't know, a long time, so.
Since last summer.
Well, yeah, so, so, let's, let's get.
I just gave him a plan, is the only good, Doc, Doc.
That, that, that's, that's.
Let me finish, Tom Dini and I have talked about this numerous times.
Okay.
And they, to resolve it, we're gonna have to get an independent person that the cops don't know anything about and, and put surveillance on that.
Why, why should I do that if the cops don't have anything about doing, about telling?
Because you don't trust the cops.
Well, I do have a problem to address the cops.
You do, because you said they ratted on putting the cameras up.
Well.
So, we're out of it there, we're, they'll use us putting up cameras.
Okay, so, well, am I not supposed to call the police when they do something?
You're not listening, let's take turns talking, I told you the way to resolve it, and we don't have another way.
That costs me money, that costs my money.
Sure, it costs the city money too.
We pay taxes here.
Okay, we can't take turns talking, I shut up.
Uh, mayor?
Well, that's enough.
I wanted to clarify, that's not in a Tiff district, it's not in a Tiff district.
Oh, yeah, Tiff has absolutely nothing to do with your problem.
Well, it, it was in a Tiff.
No, it's not, it's never been.
Matter, it doesn't matter, it, it has nothing to do with your problem. These people do not have, uh, redevelopment agreements, the whole area might be in a Tiff district, but it has absolutely nothing to do with these people trashing your yard.
Well, I'm not asking for trouble or anything like that, when we're the, all I'm, the reason I'm here is I'm.
Yeah, but what I'm trying to tell you, Jim, uh, you're, you're making a wild statement when you say this happens because they are in a Tiff district.
No, I'm not saying it's happens because, I'm just saying they are in.
But they're not.
It has absolutely nothing to do with it, absolutely nothing.
Well, they, the problem is, we were all a nice neighborhood, a residential neighborhood, and they moved these people in here that, that are poor business people that are trashy, and it's crashing our neighborhood.
It has nothing to do with Tiff.
No.
Okay.
And it's not in a Tiff district, it's not.
Was it?
No, never has been.
Well, it shows on the, it showed on the map.
No, it doesn't, the Tiff map's in my office, it does not, they are.
Oh, okay, we, we, we've gone far enough.
I mean, I'm not trying to stir, stir up trouble, but all I'm asking is for it to stop, and I want it to stop.
Well, okay, we'll get together.
I wanna ask you, ask you one thing though. Uh, did I hear you say the street department plowed a bunch of rocks up on your?
No, they didn't do that. No, the, the people they had hired next door.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I, when they, when it snowed again, he was out there plowing. And I went out there with a camera and I told him, I said, would you mind moving some of those rocks back over there?
It wasn't the street department.
Yeah. And he did move some of the rocks back over there.
Okay, we, we, we spent enough time on this. We'll, we'll see what we can do, uh, discuss this. I think, uh, Commissioner Ricks has come up with a plan. Uh, you apparently are not satisfied, won't accept it. Uh, so, we'll try to, uh, work out something.
I think law enforcement should have something.
Well, I appreciate that. And do you hear what I just now said? We'll discuss it. We'll try to get something, uh, put together and then we'll let you know. Okay, I'll take care of that. Anything else? All right, if not, I think we need to motion going to executive session.
Second.
And, and what was the purpose?
Personnel.
I got real estate law.
Oh, you guys got something?
I got real estate.
Personnel and real estate.
Executive session. Oh, okay. Well, we know it's gonna, okay.
I'll make a motion to pay the monthly bills as funds become available. Second.
Call roll.
Mr. Ricks.
Yay.
Mr. Vanilla.
Yay.
Mr. Goss.
Yay.
Mayor Butler.
Yay.
Now, I make a motion to pay the concerns. Second.
Call roll.
Mr. Ricks.
Yay.
Mr. Vanilla.
Yay.
Mr. Goss.
Yay.
Mayor Butler.
Yay.
Now, I'm marching to go into executive session for personnel and real estate.
Second.
Call roll.
Mr. Ricks.
Yay.
Mr. Vanilla.
Yay.
Mr. Goss.
Yay.
And Mayor Butler.
Yay.